It threw me for a little too long and suddenly I'm sitting there at work.
They didn't, he didn't tell you?
Smolly. All right, are we ready? Gentlemen, all right. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, Monday. It is April 18th, 2011, and I will call this meeting of the Norfolk City Council to order. This is an open meeting posted in the corner over here. This room is the actual open meeting act made accessible certainly to all members of the public. I will ask you to take just a moment with us, stand for a moment of silence, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I don't know, maybe. Okay, we'll continue with roll call. Coy.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Brenman.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
Saunders.
Here.
Okay. In our action, I would request a motion for approval of the consent agenda that was presented you.
So move, Your Honor?
Second.
Motion with a second for approval of the consent agenda, if you will please vote.
Your Honor, I would like to note that I will be abstaining because of a conflict I have with item number eight that way, so.
All right, Councilman, thank you. Are you ready to vote? Everyone, or Langy? Everyone voting for approval of the consent agenda?
Voting in favor of the motion, everyone except Councilman Langy. Councilman Langy abstaining, motion carries.
And again, a request for approval of the full agenda. If I could have a motion?
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion with a second for approval of the full agenda before us, if you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
And tonight, we have a few special presentations. I will start first with the VFW auxiliary presenting flags for the city parks.
Mayor and members of the city council, we're very honored tonight to present to you five flags for our city park. We want to be our city, an all-American city, and also I'd like to advise to you that the 30 flag poles on Norfolk Avenue will be fully flown on, for our Loyalty Day Parade, which will be May 2nd. Those flag poles were presented to downtown merchants way back, I don't know how many years ago, it was a special project, and our Americanism Chairman has ordered the 30 flags. They are not here yet, but I'll trust that they will be there on May 2nd. At this time, we'd like to present the flags to the Park Department Director, Pat Mersny.
Thank you. I'll thank the auxiliary, this is very nice.
Thank you, ladies, for being here. Great, appreciate that. And we will move then on to the proclamation for April 30th, 2001 as Buddy Poppy Day for the veterans of foreign wars. And if I could, I'd read the proclamation here, whereas the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922, and whereas VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising raising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and whereas the basic purpose of the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the VFW is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore be it resolved that I Sue Fuickman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2011 as Buddy Poppy Day in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska and the surrounding area, and urge all citizens to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through your donations for Buddy Poppies on the day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as a mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense for the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. And I'm going to believe Doris, that that's going to be you that's going to receive the proclamation? Dan, I don't know if there's anyone with more passion to the endeavors here, so congratulations on the efforts that you put into this and all the group, and thanks for being here.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And then, we have a proclamation for Saturday, May 14th, 2011, as Poppy Day for the American Legion Auxiliary. Whereas our community has a continuing responsibility to veterans in veterans' homes, hospitals or nursing homes, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary feels obligated to help provide for the welfare of our veterans and the families of those who made the supreme sacrifice in defense of their country, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary Unit Number 16 of Norfolk has been established to aid veterans, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has chosen Saturday, May 14th, 2011, for its annual Poppy Day, and has announced that all funds collected will be used to assist the veterans and their families in the Norfolk area. Therefore be it resolved that I Sue Fuickman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 14th, 2011, as Poppy Day in the City of Norfolk, Nebraska and the surrounding area, urge all citizens to recognize this observance and support veterans. Is there someone here tonight that's Deanna? And Sue as well, the proclamation. Is there anything that you want to say?
No, we appreciate your support.
You've got it.
And we'll see you on May 14th.
Yes, you will.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for being here. And last, we have proclamation for April 30th, 2011, as Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and the countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I Sue Fuickman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2011, as Arbor Day in the City of Norfolk, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect trees and woodlands, planning and caring for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, and participating in a tree planting opportunity on their property or in their neighborhood. Someone to receive this tonight? You know what, Pat? I think I'm going to ask you to take this one too. You've been very active and helpful in getting Tree USA taking care of for the city of Norfolk, so I would ask that you take this with you. On behalf of the tree board? That's where I think you?
Well, yes, I'll accept this on the tree board's behalf. They were the ones that championed this, and their hard work shows through.
You bet.
I'll pass this on.
All right, thanks, Pat. Okay, now, under regular agenda, I'm sorry, Burbach, I am sorry. Do you want to give a briefing here for anyone that may have missed the work session? We'll just ask you to do a quick little briefing. Great.
Thank you for welcoming Burbach Aquatics. Excuse me, I have to pull my chair up a little bit. Mr. Andy Pennekamp, the engineer on the project, and myself, Nancy Rontal, are pleased to be here, and we'd just like to share a short overview with you on the project that's getting ready to go out for bid. Again, Burbach Aquatics is thrilled to be here. We are your engineers and architects of choice, and we've been building aquatic facilities and recreation facilities since 1978. We start with the site plan that shows not only the overall aquatic facility, but how it blends in with the football and baseball and soccer usage. If you notice at the bottom, we have a circular drive where you enter into all of the facilities. There will be memorial flags around that circular drive to honor the veterans of our United States that are here in Norfolk and the surrounding areas. This is the site on a little bit larger view. In the lower left-hand corner, you'll notice there's an H-shaped building where the, all facilities will be used by all sports teams. When you come into the center of that building, you feel like you're entering a courtyard. You'll go through the front doors, and there is a entrance desk, admissions desk, so if you're coming to swimming, for swimming, you would check in there, and if you go to your left, you'll be going into the women's locker room, and if you go to the right, you'll be going into the men's locker room. If you go straight back, you have family changing areas for the public to use in case there are mixed sexes fathers with children, parents or siblings with people that need assistance in their family or friends. Back here, we have offices for the manager and staff offices or training rooms back here. This corner will house the full-service concession kitchen with storage for refrigerators, freezers, washers, and dryers, and dry goods. There's storage over on this end of the building as well, and if I back up a little bit, let me just revert back, you'll see that there is a path for the visitors team to come into their end of the building. This would be their locker room usage during games. The home team would have their own path, so their paths don't cross, and they come into their area of this multi-use facility. So again, we've got good separation between the home and visiting teams. Up in the front of the building, we have public restrooms for patrons to use so that they don't, so that the fans don't have to mingle with the team if they so choose not to, so there's restrooms on either side for men and women. Once we get out into the aquatic center, we have a wave pool that has attached to it a zero-depth area of water that has a interactive playstation that will have slides and buckets that dump gallons of water all at one time, and cannons, water cannons that can shoot people in case there's anybody you don't like, there you go. You've got, you've got your weapon of choice. The other vessel is a combination of an eight-lane lap pool with a catch pool for one slide, and a recreational pool at the back has a catch pool for the second slide, which is a raft slide. After you leave the raft slide, you can come over and do the water walk feature, which has floats on top of the water, and you try to walk across water. Overhead, there is a net that you can hang on to for help. And then, as you come out, the water gets shallower until at this point it becomes a zero depth. This is a pelican tot slide for the little ones in the shallow water. This water feature is four geysers in the floor of the pool that shoot water up as a water fountain, and over here, we have a spinning and tipping bucket, so water will splash out of three buckets that are at the top of that area. The triangular shape units that you see are shade structures. Some of the shade structures will have tables under them, some will have chase lounges under them. Throughout the facility are going to be embedded benches for patrons to rest at, in addition to the chase lounges. This is a planned party area for birthday parties and so forth. Over on this side, where you see these shade structures, there will be concession tables, both under the shade and out in the sun, for swimmers as well as football patrons, baseball patrons, soccer patrons, to come up to the concessions window and pick what you'd like to eat and enjoy the fine weather. I'm just trying to see if there's anything else in that picture that would be of huge interest to everybody. We'll go on to the next slide. This is the footprint of the building, and as you can see, it is H-shaped, and if we go to the next slide, it gives you a little bit closer view. Again, you come in through the front doors, this is your U-shaped front desk bullpen, and once you've checked in, you can go into the women's locker rooms, or you can go to the right, go into the men's locker rooms. You come out onto the pool deck right here. Women's locker rooms, you come out right here. As you can see, we have public restrooms at the front of the building on either side for men and women, patrons. We have numerous storage areas. There's never enough storage in these facilities, so we have incorporated several storage areas. There's more office space on here as well. Here you see the family changing areas for people that would like a little bit more privacy. In addition to the staff training room over here, there is a staff restroom so that they have a place for changing in and out of uniforms and so forth. Okay, and here we have the four elevations of the building. This again is the front entrance with, which is the south elevation. So you have your front doors with your signage above that, naming the facility. This is a parapet wall, and behind that, where's my cursor, excuse me, behind that is where some of the rooftop HVAC units will be sitting, and so that protects the view so that you see the building and not those units. These areas up here are for additional lighting and for architectural design on the building. This is the backside or the north side of the building where people will be coming out onto the pool deck. We have room for a bank of lockers, and as you come around this corner, you would find the concessions area or the cafe. I can't read which, that's the west side of the building, I apologize. And you'll notice that on this building, we have some design work in the precast wall units, precast concrete wall units. The design that you see running in the upper band is a Stars and Stripes band. On this wall, there will be a memorial flag, and below that is a line that represents a wave feature. And the final east side of the building, these are your three concession windows. There will be a slight overhang here so that people can stand in the shade while they order their food. Again, drinking fountains, there's a standing seam roof on these two wings, and a membrane roof in the center. And here we have some of the water features that, once you get into the aquatic center, you will see. Again, in the wave pool, we have people that are floating calmly in inner tubes, and sometimes it will be calm, and sometimes it won't, so that will create a lot of excitement. We have the spinning tipping buckets in that lower left-hand corner, and that is one of the features in the zero-depth splash, zero-depth area. Here we have a water walk where the young man is hanging on to the net overhead in hopes of making it across the water as he's walking on the floats. This is an example of an interactive playstation. It's similar to the one that will be called for in Norfolk, but the one in Norfolk will be a bit larger than that. Here's another view of the water walk, and you'll notice that the young man in the front has, at one time, he was on the float, and his feet came off, and so now he's hanging on for dear life. Here's a picture of zero-depth recreational area. And again, another view of people floating on their inner tubes in a wave pool. This is a picture of one of the two slides in your project. This is a raft slide where the flume is actually large enough to house either a double or a single raft, so you can come down by yourself, or you can come down with a buddy. You splash into the catch pool area. And the traditional diving board that we're all familiar with, this is a three-meter, there will be one three-meter and one one-meter diving board at this facility. And finally, the toucan slide is a tot slide that is in the zero-depth area. And that is what is on the drawing board for Norfolk, Nebraska. Burbach Aquatics is your choice of engineers and architects since 1978, and we are building excitement here in Norfolk. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Andy, both again, for being here and sharing. Look forward to the updates as we move forward. So I think too Dennis has got a little bit to add regarding what's going on in our present field location.
I'll just give you a quick update on football, baseball operations. Since the last meeting, we've had a pre-construction conference with contractor, Niemhaugh Construction and DLR. Niemhaugh has mobilized some of their equipment to Norfolk and started putting up the cell fences today, which is the first step of the project. Weather-dependent, Porter is supposed to be in there, starting to dig a detention facility or retention facility and to help with the erosion control, and then I think probably moving right on to starting the work on the removal of the soils for the football upgrades. So that's where they're at, and probably next week will be when we'll probably really see some construction starting.
Okay, thanks, Dennis. All right, are we ready to move on? Any questions anybody might have of Dennis or? Okay. Then I think we'll move to the regular agenda before us tonight, asking for consideration of ordinance number 5157, amending section 24-164 of the city code to remove current parking prohibition on the south side of Pazwalk Avenue from Logan Street to First Street.
Your Honor, I'll introduce ordinance number 5157.
Okay, a motion with a second. I look to you, Clint, first maybe, to give us a little information on this?
The ordinance that you've got before you simply will allow for parking on the north side of the Memorial Field area there. Parking's going to be at a premium in the area, and so this is an opportunity or a method that's being sought to provide some, some opportunity for parking, something that obviously you can take off at any time and decide whether you want to, whether it works well or whether it doesn't work well, if the street's wide enough for it, and so on and so forth. So I guess that if you approve this, parking would be allowed there until you change it.
On both sides?
No, just on, no parking on the north side of the street, only on the south side of Pazwalk Avenue, the side right adjacent to the park.
Just wanted to make that clear. Okay, any discussion on this at all? Okay, there are none then? Beth, I'd look for a short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend section 24-164 of the official city code to remove the current parking prohibition on the south side of Pazwalk Avenue from Logan Street to First Street, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. I would ask for you to vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5157 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5157 on second and third, second?
We have a motion with a second to suspend on second and third reading, ordinance number 5157. If you have any discussion here at all? If not, please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5157 carries on second and third.
And next, I would look for consideration of ordinance number 5158, amending sections 13-111, 13-114, and 13-116 as city code, so that references to temporary merchants include merchants selling service as well as goods.
Your Honor, I would introduce ordinance number 5158.
Second, Your Honor.
A motion with a second, looking for discussion. Again, city attorney, you want to give us information on this?
What this, what this ordinance would do if you were to approve it would be to basically amend the definition of temporary merchants, to clarify that, and to make it clear that it doesn't only need to be the sale of merchandise or also the provision of services. As such, this would be something that would apply to, after the recent hail event, for instance, it would apply to paintless dent removers that might set up on a, on a parking lot of a church or some unrelated business, and so it puts some, some of the same restrictions, the same requirements that would be in place for a temporary merchant, primarily registration things, indication that, that it's not a problem within setback and just some rudimentary control on, on those sorts of ventures. Be happy to answer any questions, or Scott might be able to answer any of the hard questions that you might have in regard to this. Is this a problem?
Historically, it's been a problem. We see many of the previous hail events that have occurred, we've been, I've had a lot of questions come my way, many through the elected officials, as to how we should capture these influx of dentless repair folks that would arrive in town. There was a strong feeling of allowing free enterprise and wanting to allow them the opportunity to do that work. There was also a very strong feeling of trying to preserve the integrity of our existing auto body, folks that work hard to run a business and establish all the safety and appropriate features to run a business, and so we previously had no way to capture them, no regulatory mechanism to grab a hold of them and say, who you are, what are you doing, and where you're going to do it, and is it really okay to be doing that there? And so this amendment allows us a way to allow them to do the work should they desire, but at least there's some check and balance to them being here. So this is in a little bit of response to the business community that felt that there was, it was too easy for them to come in with no accountability, come in, do the work, leave town. There was no consumer protection because we really didn't even have a name of who they were and where they came from, and so if the, if the work went bad, we didn't even have a record of who they were. So if they're associated with a current body shop or an existing car dealership, they're legitimized by being a part of that known quantity, that known business in the community. If they come in and simply shut, set up shop someplace, unattached to somebody, this gives us a mechanism to find out the who, what, and where of what they're about. So it's trying to balance the whole free enterprise versus making sure they're legit and, at least to some degree, of knowing who and what, where they're at, and then doing the work. So that's what we're trying to do with the minor change to this code, without rewriting a whole new section of code to deal with that. We just tried to fit them in with a few modifications to this section, so.
Okay.
That's the history on that.
Thanks, Scott.
I'm kind of curious, would this also apply to foreign roofers and ciders?
I don't think so. The difference, the primary difference, I think, Councilman, this is a great question, is if you look at, if you look at the ordinance that is attached here that we're talking about, it really talks in section 13-116 about what standards are applicable to temporary merchants, and, and the difference between the people that are doing the dent repair on a parking lot somewhere, I would guess, I would say that, that the roofer or the cider that comes to town would be more like the paintless dent repairman that comes to your house and, and maybe does some work there. They're there, and they're gone, and, and the restrictions you see or the regulations that you see in section- And, and the restrictions you see or the regulations that you see in section 13-116 talk about, if they're located on the property, in order to issue the permit, they need to show that they've got the right to be there, that they haven't just squatted there, that they've got permission from the owner, that they've, that they're setting up in a place that doesn't create site problems, or so on and so forth. Talks about who the people are. If somebody contacts the city and says, who were those people that did this work and they were at such and such a place? Well, if they've registered, at least they know who they are and they provided some identification. So that's really what we get from this, not the same kind of thing as we would get whether we've got somebody coming to our, to our home to do work or whatever. I guess the other question, Scott, that I would ask you is, if somebody does come in light of the, in light of the hail event, if someone does come and, from out of town and is doing shingling or siding, are there requirements for permits for either one of those? And do they need to be registered as a contractor, or any other pertinent comments that you might?
Excellent question, and also one that's been revisited many, many times in the past, and often right after the hail event. We brought this issue to the home builders on many occasions, try to get some, garner some opinion from them as to how this should be regulated. The difficult part of it is you don't need a permit to re-roof your house, and you don't need a permit to put on siding. So to regulate an industry that isn't otherwise required to get permits is very difficult. And the general consensus was, from our local building community, is they did not want to have another category of permit requirement in doing roofs and siding. And so to reach out and require some mandatory registration or capturing of those inbound contracting firms that come after the storm, storm-chasing firms, whatever you want to call them, there was not a local, a lot of local support for that on both of the recent two times that I'm aware of that it came up in the past. So we did not move forward with any ordinance amendments to that particular, to address that particular issue based on a lot of feedback from our own local business community, because to regulate one, it opened a whole nother door of regulating a whole nother aspect of the industry that there was a feeling we did not want to do. So that's why we did not do that at this time. We're certainly willing to entertain that differently if there's a different perspective out there, but that was a clear message that we were sent on both occasions, and we talked about that in the past, so.
That's kind of how we got to where we, to where we are. I think the other thing that goes along with that as we talk about this, this change is that over the last few years or the past few hail events, I think that maybe the view of the alternative or the opportunity for, for paintless dent repair to automobiles has kind of become more mainstream than what it might have been a few storms ago.
Yeah, I think in the, in the early days of those conversations, there were not, that particular technology or choice of services was not contained within each of our local dealer, or, you know, repair facilities. And I think more of that has become the commonplace. So what I used to, would say, get multiple complaints, dozens of complaints, early in the storm event, I've not received a single one yet on this one. So this attempt is to be proactive and not wait for that to occur, but to have it in place should it, should it occur. But there seems to be a softening of that whole, that whole mindset or culture within the industry, because in the previous two hail events, there were strong, strong numbers of calls in that regard, and I've not received any this time. So I don't know if that's coincidence or luck, but as I was driving to the, to Eldo and the storm was, to the Humane Society fundraiser and the dents were pelting my car, I knew come Monday morning I was going to be working on a new ordinance, because it just repeats itself, and it's laid dormant there for a long time. And when the new event comes, you, you kind of resurrect those old issues. But this is an attempt to try to be, put something in place. If we need to regulate it, if we don't, it'll lay dormant and be page 3000 in the big book that Clint takes care of. So, so that's kind of the background of that.
Okay, thanks.
Kind of part of it might be the evolution of the automobile, too. You know, when it was made out of real metal and now it's made out of...
Sure, that could be it, too.
Well, aluminum or whatever. A fly runs into it and you have a dent.
Good point.
Yeah. Any other discussion regarding this? Okay, and then I'll look for a short title from you, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend sections 13-111, 13-114, and 13-116 of the official city code so that references to temporary merchants includes merchants selling services as well as goods to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And if you would please vote?
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5158 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass this on second and third as I think the event has already passed us by.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I'll second that.
We have a motion with a second to suspend on second and third. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5158 carries on second and third.
Okay. Next, I will look to Randy to give us presentation of the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2010, along with the related single audit reports and auditor's letter.
Yes, Your Honor. There's three financial reports included in the agenda packets, and I'm closer 23, being on page 51 of your agenda packet. First one, financial report, and then on purpose. And there's the single audit reports, and finally, the auditor's management letter. The first report are the CAFR's on pages 51 through 176 of your agenda packets. It's very similar to last year's CAFR, or no big accounting pronunciations implemented this year. Probably the best place to get a broad overview of the city's financial condition is the two government-wide financial reports that are in the CAFR.
Randy, you want to pull the mic a little closer to you? They're waving at...
I don't want anybody to miss out on this.
And no one wants to either, Randy, I guarantee it.
As I was just saying, the, probably the best place to get a broad overview of the city's finances is the two citywide financial statements. Those are on pages 29 and 30 of the CAFR, pages 85 and 86 of the agenda packets. These statements are prepared on a full accrual basis, like most business financial statements are. And the, if you look at page 30, which is a statement of activities, that's pretty similar to, or comparable to a business's income statement. And it shows the city's net assets increased a little over $1 million, $1,34,977 in the 30, the last line from the bottom. And that'd be similar to net income for a business. And this increase was entirely in the business-type activities, which are the city's three enterprise funds, water, sewer, and solid waste. All of them had net income. Water had by far the biggest increase, almost $786,000. And the reason for that is water rates have been set to fund some major capital improvements that are shown in the Water Master Plan. There's almost 20 million of those through the next nine or 10 years. Governmental activities, which encompasses the rest of the city's operations, police, fire, parks, library, those types of things, had almost no change in net assets. When you look at this, you'll see property tax had a fairly significant increase that went up almost three-quarters of a million dollars. And this was due to the property tax increase implemented a year ago when the council had a $400,000 increase for the council priority projects and $355,000 to start bringing revenue growth in line with expenditure growth. Sales tax is the biggest general fund revenue, and it hasn't been growing much the last 10 years, which is a big part of the reason for that property tax increase. Over the last 10 years, it's had a compounded annual growth rate of only 1.3%. This year, you'll see it did a little bit better. When you look at the statement of activities, you can see that it grew from $6,760,144 last year to $6,919,663 this year, which is a 2.4% increase. Still not the growth we'd like to see, but better than what it had been. And that comprises 43% of general fund revenue. The second report in the agenda packets is the, is the single audit reports. And there are really three separate reports, and they begin on page 177 of the agenda packets. The first report is the supplementary schedule of federal financial assistance on pages 180 to 182 of the agenda packets. And when you look at that, you'll see we get quite a bit of federal funding. We expended almost one and a quarter million dollars of federal funding last year, slightly less than the 1.3 million that we had the year before. The largest federal grant we had this year was $500,000 of community development block grant funding, which we loaned to Milk Specialties. This was related to their purchase of the former Proteum plant. Second-largest grant was for the Community Character Development Coalition. It had funding pretty similar to the year before, about $400,000 both years. This was the final year of that funding. It was originally supposed to be a five-year grant, and it was to go through the fiscal year ended September 30, 2013, but federal priorities changed with the change of administrations, and this was the last year that this is going to be funded. They cut us short. The remaining single audit reports are the report on internal control over financial reporting and the report on the city's compliance with major federal program requirements. All three of these reports are clean except for the finding on internal control related to financial reporting. This is the finding we have every year and is very common. It's generated whenever there are auditor-proposed adjustments. We have some immaterial auditor-proposed adjustments that resulted in this finding. It's a finding we expect to get every year, and we got it once again this year. Last report in the agenda packets is the required communication from the auditors or the management letter. That begins on page 189, and it talks about the auditor's responsibilities under generally accepted auditing standards. And it, too, is a clean report except for those immaterial auditor-proposed adjustments I just referred to. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions at all for Randy? Okay.
Randy, just, I guess I just have not really a question, but maybe you could go over the process of how we got to here, and we put this out for bid.
We bet our audit every four years, and we had, I think, four or five firms propose, and we selected Williams and Company because they had the most experience by far in auditing comprehensive annual financial reports. No other firm that proposed was anywhere close to the experience they had.
Question. Okay. Anything else for Randy before we shut him off here? Okay. Before we move further, Councilman Merrill, did you want to address at all your thoughts right now as far as on the, the article that you're working on? Or do you want to do that? You might just share where you are with that. I know you, we were going to try it in the work session, and I failed to do so, so we're still in an open meeting, and you can certainly just give a briefing on what's going on there.
We're contemplating being able to put a, a column in the Norfolk Daily News on a fairly regular basis, we like to call city forum, that will, you know, be a mouthpiece, if you will, of things going on in the city. Those particular columns might address, for example, seasonal types of items. I mean, right now, we're, we're looking at getting ready to have kids sign up for swim lessons, and softball's going to be kicking up, baseball's coming around, all those types of things. Perhaps, although it hasn't been scheduled, or we haven't gotten all the articles written that we'd like to, we might, in the future, want to talk about sidewalks in August as opposed to February, or maybe talk about snow removal in, in October as opposed to, you know, later on in, in the season. Just some general, hopefully, things of interest for the, for the public so they can see kind of how their city government runs and some of the programs that are being put forth by the city. So we're in a, we're just kind of discussing that right now, so hopefully we'll be able to, to nail down some of the things we'd like to see done and come back and talk about that at a later date. Thank you, Your Honor.
I appreciate it. I know you put a lot of time and effort into it, and I know communication is very important. We all recognize that, but I applaud you for taking the lead and starting this off. So, and the other thing I think Dennis would like to just remind us of an upcoming event here?
Yes, we're working forward on 25th Street. The appraiser and the review appraiser is finishing those appraisals and going to get those to the Department of Roads soon for their review. We have scheduled a special city council meeting for May 9th, and we'll have it at our Savior Lutheran Church at 25th and Norfolk Avenue for a public hearing on right-of-way acquisition for the 25th Street project. There's a section of state statute that requires a public hearing before the city acquires interest in any real estate. So we're going to combine that public hearing requirement with just an update of the project for all of the constituents or citizens that live along the street and anybody else that's of interest. But it'll be 5:30 PM on May 9th at our Savior Lutheran Church.
Okay.
Any questions, I'll answer them.
Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.